We'll call, Madam. Keith Parker. Shane Bowman. Greg Brooks.
Here.
Danny Carver.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Chris Harden.
Here.
Kelly Morgan.
Here.
John Pippen.
Here.
Samantha Trent. Here. All right, I want to call for nominations for the new chair. We have a nomination for Keith Parker in a second. Do we have any discussion? Oh, sorry. Well, she can't write that fast. Samantha. All right, any discussion? We'll call. Keith Parker. Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Sally Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent. Yes. It's yours. I've had it.
Okay, now we need a vice chair. We have a nomination. Nominate Greg Brooks.
Second.
Also, I'll start to say any discussion. You might have to sign.
Any discussion? Any other nominations?
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Hi.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chris Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Before we go any further on the agenda, we're gonna go into executive session with our attorneys. So as soon as we get done, we'll be back in.
Yes, I did read it. I don't know where it's at right now. Okay, everybody. You get to stand up and tell who you are. Not yet. And do your thing. What you doing? We got a new chair, Mr. Chairman.
But anyway, maybe, um... Mr. Chairman, as a result of what we have discussed previously and the law, we are expected to request that you allow the committee regarding the EMS to initially make a decision as to whether they will accept or not the RFP and the decisions which we made and the changes we made to the RFP.
Chris, do your material.
Is everybody that's on the committee, you guys, with the changes were made?
We're good.
Okay, so we can give that to the commission to vote tonight?
As long as you make the vote, at least the majority give the vote.
Yeah, all right. So, everybody says aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
If there are none, then the issue is for the commission of their, what decision that they make with reference to the approval of the RFP, which we have had recommended to you by the committee.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? We'll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chris Harden.
Yes.
Sally Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Approval of reports of office.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? We'll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chris Harden.
Yes.
Sally Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Okay, approval of motories, which actually have six. Claire Cobb, Corinne Cobb, Brett Curtis, Ashley Kane. Motion to approve.
Question to approve. Six. Second.
Any discussion? We'll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chris Harden.
Yes.
Sally Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Budget amendments, we have number 101, we have number 1 through 5. Number one is for a total of $1,271 for travel. Number two is $5,000 for, to move work crew donations, a spendable line item for lower motor and supplies. Number three is, the first line is to allocate funds received for purchase of car seats to the health department for $862.13. The second line is to allocate funds for local services needed for work pertaining to the downtown courthouse for a total of $15,862.13. Number four is per resolution 6109, shall not exceed 70,000 at the end of each, at June 30th each year. So that's a transfer of $30,556 to the undesignated fund balance. Number five in 101 is transfer in a fund from 128 closeout. And that's a total of $1,219,445.46. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one thing, you're gonna see some of those same numbers coming up in your different volunteer minute because they have to be brought up and then it doesn't need back into 101. So some of them may look like that tissue.
Any other discussion? We'll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Okay, budget amendment in 116 sanitation. Number one is transfer in of $200,000. That's for a transfer in a fund from Fund 128 closeout.
Question to approve. Second.
Any discussion? We'll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chris Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Okay, budget amendments. Number one is a fund, number 128. That's a closeout report for Fund 128.
Motion to approve. Second.
We'll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chris Harden.
Yes.
Sally Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Okay, Fund Number 178, Amendment Number One, that's for capital projects building fund. To move funds out of Fund 178 to Fund 101 for regular expenses needed for downtown courthouse. Total $15,000.
Question to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chris Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Okay, budget amendment for Pope County.
We have a budget amendment.
Okay, fund balance from August meeting, Kelly Morgan.
Yes, that's me. So, I didn't get this in a packet ahead of time, so we can vote on it next month if you want to. I do wanna get some opinions on it. So, when they approved our budget this year, they did recommend that we have a fund balance policy. In most cases, they do recommend 15%, which I asked Catrice, I talked to her today. In the last two years, they have recommended 15% when we're doing the budget. That being said, CTEs looked at the policy and sent it to me yesterday, so I got it late. And they said the policy looked fine and it was at 15%. But if we don't wanna back ourselves in a corner, do you wanna lower it to 10%? It's up to whatever we wanna do. 15% I don't think is gonna put us in a bind because we always have more than 15% of their expenditures in our fund balance. But I wanted to get your thoughts on that and then I can put whatever percentage you want in there.
So you wanna just put this on next month's agenda?
Yeah, do you wanna give me a percentage and then I can make sure the right percentage is in there and then I can send you guys the policy to look at?
If we never had no trouble, I don't change.
Do you wanna leave it at 15?
You think we should?
Or do you wanna go down to 10?
There's nothing wrong with 15. We've been talking for a minute today on this. I don't wanna see us backed into it. And I don't think 15% would, but just in case, can we go with 12?
We can do whatever you wanna do. Do you wanna do 12? That's no, normally they'll do, I'm fine with doing 12, so we got some leeway. But they normally do, when we do the budget summaries, have it kinda set up in the spreadsheets that if it goes below 15%, it will flag it. So I don't think we'll ever get there, but I'm fine doing 12 just so that gives us some leeway. If you're, if you're okay with that.
Okay.
After we talked, I started thinking about that increase to collections.
Right.
I thought maybe a little less.
I'm fine with 12. If that's what y'all are okay with, then I'll make that and I'll send it out and you can vote on it next month.
Okay. Okay, fire department. Chris Harden.
Matt? Would you like to address?
Something y'all know, it's a balance. Matt Price, y'all leave help. Hope Washington, that's a good business, bless him in my back room, I'll be too. In early August, I was trucked by some community members and a couple members of the fire department about some issues they were having and most people didn't know about it. So, did a small investigation, went around and photographed some of the items that best we could, compiled that information and provided it to the county executive or the board of county commissioners. Been asking questions about that since it started, I wanted to answer some of them this evening. One of them was why was this approached in the manner it was? Because the last time the issue was brought up, years ago, trucks were moved and hidden at multiple locations on the west side of the county and the majority of the visible outside clutter was cleaned or moved, but almost nothing was done interior at most stations. Out of service trucks and other clutter was slowly reaccumulated. Also, with that being said, on those info packets, the picture of the scaffolding and the other things in the Lindstall station can be disregarded. And I figured out after that was taken that they're actively working on their building. They're actively in the process of fixing something. I didn't know that until that packet had been turned in, you guys. Although it was interpreted by me as an attack, it was nothing more than an attempt to remedy these problems. The fire department has an excellent membership of dedicated volunteers that's being held back by these issues. What has happened since this began? The fire department has made more progress cleaning, getting trucks back in service, et cetera, in the past three weeks than they have in the past few years. This was the goal of the entire issue being brought to light. They should be commended for that work and the board of county commissioners and the community should help them and encourage this to continue. The fire department can elaborate more on exactly what they've been able to accomplish in short order prior to this meeting. I wanna tell them, thank you, all of you, thank you. That work's not going unnoticed. And I also wanna thank the Springtown and Lindstall community groups, 'cause best of my knowledge, they're the last two that we've got on this side of county that are active. Is Green Creek active?
No.
But they do good work with what they've got to do it with. If the county's able to, I think, feel like the community groups ought to be showing a little support as you can. Another question I got asked is what spending items can be mitigated in your opinion? It is my opinion that unnecessary spending be stopped until the fire department has a better grasp on all the out of service vehicles in their possession. They should be repaired or sold if not repairable. The two county vehicles provided to chief officers should be used for official business only. And mileage logs, trip explanations should be completed and submitted to the county executive's office at least once. Spending on items available to Pope County through a third party should be stopped. There are several examples of that, but the one I just pulled out is the underwater drone, ROV, that's been purchased. They do have an application here, they're a good tool to have. But they're available from at least two other agencies, right here in our area. Most towns would now at no charge to Pope County. So why don't you Pope County buy one? When you got all this stuff set around, it doesn't work. The financial information at the rear of that package, the last portion of the information package provided to the board of county commissioners includes several invoices, statements, RFPs, et cetera. The main document that, that I know of that needs to be followed up by the board of county commissioners is the 2002 model Pierce fire engine purchase dated 5/25/18. The purchase was $4,800 and was paid with check number 1026172. This truck is said to still be located in McInnes County. This needs to be researched and verified by the board of county commissioners. I do not have any information on the remainder of that portion of the document. All the rest of the RFPs, invoices in there, I don't know a whole lot about them, that's the only one I had knowledge of, is the O2 Pierce. All right, so end goals. One goal that we had was to provide volunteers at this department with safe, dependable, emergency vehicles and equipment at every fire station. Whether it's in Old Ford, Springtown, Benton, they should all be equipped as close to the same as we can get them with working, safe fire trucks. If not only for the community, these volunteers deserve that. Another goal is to declutter all the stations and grounds associated with them. If a vehicle or other equipment is not repairable, it needs to be sold or disposed of through the proper channels. That money could then be used to repair out of service equipment. In the end, this would benefit the members of the fire department, the citizens of Pope County, and the people traveling through the county. This is and was a good faith effort to improve this situation as a whole. Thank you for your time, that's all I got.
Would you like to address?
I'll make a reply to that. On, I know two occasions, we went to County Jake Patrick and we discussed ways to get rid of the decommissioned trucks that are sitting there. We discussed putting them on gov deals and saying, you know, like an account, to have them all condoned. This is still in the process and reminds me, we're still in the talking stage of that to get things moving forward. As far as the underwater drone goes, that was a donation. It wasn't purchased by the fire department. The money was earmarked, thrown a donor specifically for that. As far as trucks, not getting equipped all the same, all of our trucks have all the same equipment on them. It may not be in the exact same spot, but when we buy a tool for one truck, we buy it for all seven. That way they're all standardized. We do have trucks that are down, we have two trucks sitting in Benton, at a maintenance shop, having new motors put in it. We have a tanker in the maintenance bay, just had a new pump put in it and it's being repumped. So, that's where that stands at.
The two trucks that were bought from Bradley County, I'll make this clear. They're not junk, but they're not to our standards. I want them upgraded before they go to any station. We completed one with three, it's at three right now. We're fixing to start working on the second one. I want inverters on them, I want the gas generators took off. I want them upgraded for this county. I want the best thing that we can put on them. I want the best thing for this county, plain and simple. That's why those trucks have not been put on service yet.
And also, I hinted out, when we got in here, with the help of Roy Jean, the fuel consumption, there was some questions about that. Roy Jean, when I called to talk with him, he said there is no problems with that. You can look through here and see that there is no overconsumption per what we're seeing here. I know that they have logs where they have, where they change the oil themselves, where they bought out of their own pocket to put in the vehicles that they drive. So that was, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we knew that this was good from that standard. 'Cause I know there'd been several complaints that we've had about us paying for the fuel. So here's that. So, comments? Where we gonna go? Yes? Jonathan, you wanna say something?
I'd rather talk to someone after the meeting.
Okay.
And on the gov deals, Catrice has got that started. They actually send somebody out for a county or municipality like we are. So that way whenever that equipment goes out, they'll actually try to help us set a value on it. We can set a reserve or we don't set a reserve. But what we've been looking for is to also get with, if you remember, as a commission, you also decide to copper basin the equipment they have, but also to set them together. And that way this is all set together for that equipment that's gonna be dispersed and go.
And there are bases that I expect that's pictured in that packet that doesn't even belong to us. That dozen and a half, it was took out of commission because the brakes are bad on it. We can't get parts for it. That belongs to the Porser Service, they've been told to come and get it.
What was the deal with our truck showing up in Old Ford at the house fire, no water?
That would be engine left.
Crises.
President.
I mean, I'm assuming there was something wrong with it that was unaware.
I didn't know of anything been wrong with it at the time.
So it just, no water.
We don't know what happened there. Be honest.
I've had an explanation on that.
Go ahead.
I was told that the truck had been worked on and pulled back in opposite way. It made it look like it was ready to go, but it hadn't been refilled yet.
So just a mistake.
And it was, it was a...
Engine 11 had any major failures been worked on?
When I was told...
It has not?
When I called nasty blocky about it, I was told that the truck had been worked on.
What was repaired on it? What was repaired?
I didn't ask. But it was being repaired and they pulled it back in. Apparently they'll pull it one way if they're ready to go and park them backward or something if they're not.
That's something I'm not aware of.
Well, normally the truck is being worked on and repaired, while it's in the process of being fixed, it normally knows then to where, you know, the full three hours.
Well, that's what I was just...
It's also sent out on a page and system that that truck is out of service.
So it is parked a different way if it's being worked on, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. So we're saying that happened? I, I was told that it was being worked on and then a call come in and it was just a second statement.
I got it.
I mean, if there's something wrong...
As far as actual reason I have a bad situation never happens again.
Now, I mean, whatever we need to do, I mean, we need to repair, we need to repair. 'Cause, I mean, our community can't do that. Watch somebody's house go up and have to call outside help. Not saying that you would never have to do that.
Well, that's, that's not the reason the house, when we could not locate the fire, is well, me and another firefighter that was in here right now searched that house. It was hidden between the walls, going from the basement to the roof. And it did not present itself until it was too late.
Wouldn't have mattered. Now, this, this will make sure when our fire, you know, get there, we have water.
Maybe you could get some kind of big flash cards that you lay on the, on top of the dash. Ready, not ready.
I like to say though, they get, they get pages, so they should be paying attention to it.
Yeah, but, you know, if, I mean, that's something that...
I'd like to say something. I was present when that truck was pulled. And so, Tim just notified you guys that it, and it's a procedure within the fire department. If that truck was out of service, it would have been placed out of service by pulling in the opposite direction. It would have also been notified on the system to notify everybody in the fire department that it was out of service. It was not out of service.
But it just hadn't been filled up by accident.
I don't know the answer to that one. I'm standing in the room with other members that were on that truck also. When I went to that member and said, what happened? He said, Michael, the truck has no water.
I mean, the states is gonna happen.
Also told that the second truck that showed up on scene, also out of Station 3, had no water.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Yeah, I mean, how, honestly? Station 3 is a truck that's been known for years.
Well, that's why I'm saying, that's happened in Lindstall a couple of times too, throughout the year.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why I'm just making this suggestion.
Station 7 is also another truck that currently, I don't know if they resolved it because I've been kicked out of the fire department for standing up for these same exact issues. So, Station 7 has been known for years not to hold water. Station 3 has been a truck known for years not to hold water. I would also tell each and every board member in here that the membership has been notified that if anybody signs with Matt Price, they will be instantly terminated. I'm not with them anymore. Okay, they're, they're saying it's not true. They're saying it's not true. If there's other members in this room that gave me that information, they're more than willing to stand up and say that that's been told. If they don't do it, I can't help you, I just know that that's what had been told. I've also been told that Matt Price and I will be sued for slander and that the board has approved it. Don't know if that's true, but I'm gonna put it on the front table. And I'm willing to stand for anything for this citizens of this town for what I've seen is poor management of a fire department. It's horrible, guys. The environment is horrible. It is constant fighting, bickering. People at each other, stabbing each other in the back. East Pope County was dissolved. When East Pope County was dissolved, you had new membership, you had new leadership coming into that division. You had six people that were part of that fire department in the beginning. You have 60 members at that fire department because it is leadership. There is no leadership in West Pope County Fire Department. It is a toxic environment where people are constantly condemned and attacked. If you stand up and fight for my station, which has had a truck that hasn't worked in two years, it's ridiculous.
We have worked up, before our next commission meeting, a lot over to perform some of it too.
We've not approved any litigation. This is your...
That's okay, I'm just sharing with you guys what I was told before I walked into this room by other members that are current members of the fire department.
And you all are clear that we as a county commission can't do anything about your leadership.
I, I understand that.
We're a charter group and, and...
You can dissolve that membership just like you did East Pope.
We can not dissolve a chartered organization.
Totally different.
An organization can dissolve itself.
Yeah, we can.
We can choose not to sponsor that organization, but we can't, uh, West Pope Fire and Rescue was around way before the county started helping.
I understand that completely, sir. And please forgive me, I want you all to know that I have PTSD. And so, I'm doing my very best to be proper in all this. If I step out of line anyway, please forgive me, I'm doing my best.
I, I just, I do wanna make it real clear, the county does have a... I, I just, I do wanna make it real clear, the county does have the cars under their name and under their interest, but a lot of those cars were bought by the fire department with their own funds and turned over to the county.
I understand that.
We don't have control over the property or the equipment on most of what the West Polk Fire Department...
What I'm saying at a station that I ran ninety percent of the calls out of my station, Station Five in Delano, okay? And that's just a number that I'm guessing ninety percent of those calls. When I don't have a fire truck to protect my neighbors or to run the calls to help others, and I'm fighting as this leadership is wastefully spending money on buying frivolous stuff while there is a fire truck that is not operating to protect people, that is wrong.
And you said it's been out of service how long?
Two years.
Why did you wait that long to come to us?
Ma'am, I'm not, I'm not from this area, and if there's one thing I've learned in this area, it's all in who you know. You are attacked, I have been absolutely attacked, discredited, um, belittled, everything has been done to me for standing up for trying to get a fire truck in that station. It's wrong.
So, so, just to be clear, there's two different fire trucks that showed up with no water?
From my understanding, the first truck, Truck Eleven, which there's nothing on, that is their primary engine for this whole county, showed up with no water. The member that pulled that truck and drove up to scene is a good member. It's not someone that made a mistake, he's a good member. And he drove that truck to that scene, there was no water on it. The rumor come out a few days later that they didn't know how to operate it, uh, the person on that truck did not know how to operate it. That's untrue. I went back to that same member and I said, "Is it true that you didn't know how to operate that truck?", which I know is not true. He said, "Michael, that truck did not have water. I checked it." The second truck I was told was from Station Three, which has had a history of not holding water. They know that. The truck was brought to scene, it had no water. That's what I was told.
Mr. Harden?
This is my question to you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
How long was you in the department?
Three and a half years.
How much training do you have?
Um, every...
How many certifications do you have?
This is, you're not gonna attack me.
No, no, I'm asking, I'm asking, how many certifications did you have in that...
Ms. Harden, do you want this package? I, I have a handful of certifications.
A handful?
Yes.
That handful, because everything that you did was nothing. So, my thing to you is, if you've heard so much about this community, why didn't you get in there and actually try to make a difference instead of, again, you're bashing the department?
So, also, okay, thank you very much for your question. Okay, so I won the award for Volunteer of the Year.
We're not talking about awards.
Hold on.
Hey, I, I don't think...
We're talking about a certificate.
I think we need to stop our errors this day.
We're going through volunteer, we've got, we've got time limit on the meeting, it's like I said, we've got a workshop set up at six before the commission meeting, so we're gonna move on with the agenda and try to get through some of these other...
You wanted the chiefs to come to that meeting anyways to discuss things, right?
Yes.
I have, I'll, I'll email it, or scan it.
I'll send it, I'll still...
We need a long time to, to make a discussion.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Don't you drink that? We don't make a long time out of making a conversation.
No.
I said, I said for this discussion, it's gonna take longer than what we have allotted for this time.
All right, uh, next time, next time, only in general, the Ducktown Courthouse, uh, we talked about that a little bit in the building committee meeting before the meeting tonight, but I met with the IED Boardland Committee, uh, at, at the old Ducktown Courthouse, showed them the building and gave them all the information I had about it. That was for the possibility of them selling the old courthouse for us so that we could use those months, funds to, uh, build a new one. They have a meeting Thursday, the IED Board does, and they're gonna discuss it with the full board, their full board. But one thing that we do need to look at with the old Ducktown Courthouse, no matter which way we go, if we sell it through the IED Board or we auction it, we're gonna need a survey. So, we need to get that survey done and probably an upgrade, so if we need to, if we need to take a vote on that.
I, I think we offer, did we not authorize the survey already? I think we done the budget amendment tonight on that one, did not get anything done.
Just at the fifteen thousand, forty...
I think we, I think we're clear on it.
We did do that.
I think we done that.
Yeah, we did, we did a budget amendment for fifteen thousand, but I didn't know...
Tonight, that's for legal one.
I didn't, I didn't know it was for a survey for the old Ducktown...
I think it's for legal survey, it goes into legal fees, our surveys come out legally. So, Robby, am I right on that or...
As long as we got some money in there, we move around, that's not gonna be a problem, we get the coverage.
I think we're perfect.
All right, so we should be covered on that.
Yes, sir.
Capitol Projects, Carl Miller, Commissioner Cribble.
Oh, uh, we got a resolution handed out tonight. The original resolution was, I think, six nine, or six one of two thousand and nine. It had a seventy thousand dollar cap that they could not carry over seventy thousand in that line by the end of June thirtieth. The cost of patrol cars had went up and the equipment cost as well. We ended up with a situation this year where they had an open PO for the cars, but the timeframe come up too quick, and so we done a budget amendment tonight, and that I think is thirty thousand, one eighty-five, somewhere in there. So, this resolution, if passed, would take the cap amount that they can hold in that account up to under fifty thousand. It would be more than nine with today's cost than it was in two thousand and nine.
Well, before anything's done, what I'd like to see is, you know, actual cost spending to what they spent on their cars.
Well, now, this doesn't give them more money, it just caps the amount they can carry.
I understand that, but, you know, we're going from seventy thousand, one fifty, you know, to cover the cost of vehicles. But what I'd like to see is the actual costs that we spent on vehicles this year before.
Per, per vehicle in that total amount for the year.
Yeah, and then come back.
And, and also the equipment too, I've heard as much as twenty thousand on equipment, and that seems very high to me for twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment.
But maybe we come back, you know, get some...
I have no problem with that.
Get some numbers from Sheriff.
Like I said, I talked to Catrice, I talked to Catrice, talked to Sheriff on this, just to figure out which way would be easier. That's all the reason I presented.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it. It'd been reviewed, both don't win ever, and y'all may not wanna take it up to one fifty. But that would cover, like, the resolution or the budget amendment we done tonight when we moved to thirty thousand, and then we'll have to move it back in because of the open PO we had. So, they're not gonna cashing money back.
He'll just say some...
So, moving around.
Moving around and budget amendments coming back and forth for the end of the year.
It won't cost any more, either way.
I'd like to see what the cost is on the SUEs we're buying now and an itemized cost on the equipment, equipment on the...
Do you want to move this to next month and give the information?
Yes.
Sharpe, Commissioner, that's it.
Okay, we have Sherry from Sharp with us tonight. Uh, I want to touch real quick, and I've already told her that due to our meeting that has went into executive session and all this, our time is gonna be very limited, but she is gonna say a few words concerning where Sharp is with where they're at, where they're trying to go with things. This is a problem that all of us want to ignore, and to be honest with you, we do, whether we want to admit it or not, because everybody thinks that a dog is not that important when you've got ten thousand other things in Polk County that is important, and I thoroughly understand that. But, the problem is, it is a problem, and whether you are a dog lover or not, I guarantee you if little, your daughter, your son's little poochy runs away and that kid is sitting there screaming their guts out, and that dog gets picked up by Sharp, they're gonna be your best friend. But now till that happens, they're not your best friend. They're, they've gotta had a lot of bad things said about them, some of it could be true, some of it's not. Any entity you've got has got some bad apples. Everybody knows that. So, let's don't hold that against the organization itself, because they do try to do the right thing. They are called upon by the Sheriff's Department, they're called upon by everybody. A neighbor where somebody's left, they've left ten dollars, who do they call? They call Sharp. Who do they call when ten puppies are on the side of the road? They call Sharp. So, let's don't play like that these people don't do anything for this county. Now, I know that we're not gonna be able to afford a, a, a shelter right now, they know that, but they also would like to have all of our help and the whole county's commitment to help them when there's fundraisers out there, when there's anything that can be done, let's don't shun them. And believe me, it's been done. So, all that being said, Sherry, you give us a few statistics there, and we'll ask you to keep it as short as you can, please, without a problem.
All right, thank you for letting us speak tonight. Um, yeah, we, we were here several months ago and asked for a vote, we didn't get, so we went back and we have been fundraising ourselves and working on a shelter project, and we've gotten to the point now where we are, have a conceptual design, uh, we've contacted outside groups and counties, Monroe County, Sevier County, Hamilton County, Bradley County, and kind of taken their path and good things to do, not to do, and been following that. So, we're kind of at a stopping point right now for us, um, and we're looking at funding is what we need next, we need a donation of land, and then we'll have to look at funding. It would be, obviously, if county's not gonna do it, it'd be a private shelter that we would do. Don't know if we're gonna do it, there's a lot of rumors out there that we're building a fancy shelter and all this, nothing's been voted on, we're kind of a stop. Now, one thing that we have come across with going to other counties is the advice has been, "Come back to you guys and let's fix the problem." If we can't build a shelter, there's a lot of things we can do, and there's things that we can do to gain income if we wanna do it. Um, there's already laws on the books, there's rabies laws, there's the new shelter laws about how an animal has to be kept. Um, we canvassed just about every state from Texas to Georgia to Maine to Oregon and contacted county clerks and said, "What do you guys do?" And a lot of counties will, and I joke you, you're not gonna like this, but they go through, they go through you, and you have to register your dog with the county. And you can make it something simple is, "Hey, my dog is spay and neutered, it's a dollar." That's it. But if it's not, it's thirty dollars. And try to put a little penalty behind this nonsense that's out there that just doesn't stop. We cannot adopt our way in this whole country, we cannot adopt our way out of this problem. People are not spaying neutering, I know it's expensive. We were in Ducktown Saturday handing out, um, low-cost spay and neuter vouchers, I think we did twenty-four, we handed out, and we did it, um, on the west side a couple weeks earlier. So, we're doing things like that, we're trying to do low-cost spay and neuter, we did a, we do food donations, we did a donation, we gave several thousand pounds of food away to people that need it. But we need the help, there, we can raise money for the county, put in a kitty, do something, maybe have a part-time officer that focuses on, uh, the law says, if an officer goes to a house, he can ask for a rabies tag, it's a fifty-dollar fine if they don't have a rabies tag after a six-month-old dog. It's a state law that's here, you guys can read it. Um, there, it's out there, there's options. So, I don't know if there's a committee we can do, we can, um, I know I've talked to a Kawi Dog, I've talked to other people, they wanna help, get opinions, we have a ton of data that says what's out there. I understand you guys, we don't have the money in the county, but just because we don't have the money in the county for a shelter doesn't mean we don't need to address this issue.
Exactly.
Um, if I ran, if, the amount of emails and phone calls and ask Jackie to write them down and give them to you every week, you'd be amazed at the calls. Come and get my dog, I don't want my dog, come and get my cat, there's ten puppies in the road, there's fifteen puppies in the road. Every day, we average about a hundred and ten phone calls a month just for that, that's not Facebook or anything else. So, you're not seeing that because it's getting filtered through us, but it is a problem, and we just can't, cannot handle the volume that's out there. And the answer's not just to shoot every dog that you see either, I'm sorry, it's, it's not, I know they do it, sometimes you have to, but that's not the answer either. So, our ask is, is there a way to meet with a committee or have a group or something and look at the options, um, and see if we can raise some kind of money or take the laws that are already out there and start enforcing them? That would be our ask to the, to the county commission at this point.
I think, uh, we'll definitely get together with, uh, the commission in, in a, in a more not-so-visi meeting.
Right.
And we'll try to go forward with just something, some type of progress that we can show that there is interest, and I am for, it's, uh, anytime that a penalty could be in, in put upon someone that moves off and leaves.
Yes.
A dog.
There's a reason...
I think the Sheriff's Department should be able to write a ticket for that.
There's a reason people drive forty...
If there are not any kind of consequences, there's never gonna be a cure to this.
There's a reason people drive forty and then...
There's never gonna be, exactly.
So, is that really gonna, I mean, is that, like, happening every day, people's leaving and leaving their dog?
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Oh, it's unreasonable.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
They're leaving the area, they're, they're leaving Polk County, moving off and leaving a dog, tell me, every single day?
In a locked-up house with a bowl of...
Every single day? Are you telling me there's that many people leaving Polk County and leaving a dog?
They're leaving, they're going to jail, they're...
Weekly, maybe weekly, I couldn't say you every single day, but weekly, absolutely.
She give her cause, by the law.
If that's happening, that is not right.
It, it's not.
All right, but there's a lot of this stuff that's on the books that's, that you have to...
That goes too far.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm with you, I'm with you a hundred percent, but what I just said was, was not that.
No, no, that's...
But we're not PETA, we're not doing all that crazy stuff.
What I'm saying is, when you're talking about finding, we're not having the rabies shot and all that, that's nonsense. Yeah. But it's a state law.
But now, if you're talking about leaving your dog and leaving it tied in the house, that's a problem.
Why is it state law nonsense?
Yeah.
Sometimes mine laps because I work so much and I have to feed rabies clinics sometimes this six-month...
Okay, but it is a state, I'm just saying, it is a state law.
It is a state law. And I mean, we can't, we can't, we can't argue with what the law says, but, you know, I'm guilty of it too.
That, or...
But anyway, we're not gonna get into all that tonight. What we're, what we have shed the light on is that if there is no penalty, my biggest gripe is, is people moving off and leaving these dogs.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's my biggest gripe. If somebody also...
That would be the only gripe I would have.
Yeah, yeah, and if somebody is behind a car that just sets out a dog and they get their friggin' tag number, then they need to be contacted, because it, there has to be some kind of consequence.
Yeah, I mean, if that's, that's still, that's my...
Exactly, so that's the type of stuff that I'm for. Now, other than that, they...
I have too much time, yes, we need to have a conversation.
But I'm for that, but anyway, but we...
We got thirty minutes.
Yeah, but we need to, but anyway, we got a long, and I know that, but thank y'all for your attention on this topic, and I just want the whole community to realize how big this issue is. It's not little bit. We can play like it is, but it ain't. All right, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Southeast Tennessee Development District, Commissioner Cribble.
Um, where's the representative from Southeast Tennessee Development District?
He's out here behind you, he's coming up behind you.
Okay, we addressed a resolution about a year ago, and we kicked it to get more information. There's a question on whether we ever brought it back up and passed it, but the planning board, my correct, the planning board is operating under, there you go, the planning board's operating under these current guidelines now, is that right?
Yes, sir.
But we can't find where we actually passed any kind of amendments, I do wish. But we can't find where we actually passed any kind of regulations.
Do you have a copy?
I do, yeah.
Sounds like it was a year ago. I know.
I'm messing up your copy, so I need to share it, I apologize.
The planning board don't have any...
No, they have, they have it operating. I know this, uh, it's...
We discussed this and we passed that.
I don't know, I couldn't find it where we passed it.
We were supposed to have a workshop. It's not in, was it in the middle? We did have it in the middle, so we...
We were supposed to do a workshop on it.
But we didn't. So, now it's still lingering.
Now we need to put it in the middle.
We need to do a workshop before we vote on anything like this.
I can also answer any questions about the language, what specifically is being changed or altered and the impact that it will have. Or if there's any questions that I can answer. Well, I'll just go ahead and point it out, the biggest thing that's changing is on this page, the second page, specifically where it says access, I drew a little star and I bracketed that for you. Basically, what it's saying is that the current standards for private roads or permanent easements, if the private easement is serving one lot, the only requirement is that the right-of-way needs to be twenty-five feet. If the private easement is serving two to five lots, then it needs to be fifty feet with the right-of-way. And if it's five lots or more, or sorry, if it's over five lots or six lots or more, it needs to be fifty feet in addition to the current county standards. That is what is currently in your subdivision regulations. What's changing here is on the bit where it says access, it says, "For the purpose of easements, access will be defined as any property that abus only the easement and does not have frontage on another road." So, what that's saying is, let's say someone is making a six-lot development, so you have three lots on one side, three lots on the other, and going right in between those six lots is a private easement. With this, what you have right now in subdivision regulations, they would have to conform to the county standards for a county-accepted road, which I can give you the full technical breakdown, Princeton, Pockets Off, but basically, it's a lot to expect, especially for a smaller development, or a more simple development, for something like a mobile home park, or for very expensive, very complicated and intricate development, you absolutely want to have a county road on it, you want to have the best possible conditions that you can have. But with this, what the change is, is let's say, go back to those six lots, let's say you have a public road on the north face and two lots to the most north, they have frontage onto that public road. Because they have frontage on that road and they're not really utilizing that private easement, they would not have to conform to six lots for the private easement, only four. So, the only requirement in that instance would be fifty feet right-of-way. And that would go all the way down to when it's just one lot on the private easement in which the only requirement is twenty-five foot right-of-way.
So, what does that change from now? I mean, I'm aware of some, you know, you have to be on the planning permission, no exact...
Sure. So, it's, it's been a request by a few developers and surveyors, it's the standard in many other counties and communities in the Southeast Region Tennessee. And what's changing now is that even if you have frontage on the public road, if you have six lots or more, that's using that private easement, doesn't matter what's around it, they have to meet that county standard, which if you're making a smaller development and you have to conform to county standards for a road that feasibly might not be financially
Is the planning board currently, is it currently going by this?
Uh, yes. I worked with, or probably cut in over county and worked really well recently, so we got into Riceville and did one, Rogue County has, we talked about, you have to put a big road. To do that kind of road just with six lots, and these are acreage, it caused the property, the cost of the property to drive up, probably about five, eight thousand dollars an acre to be able to supplement that road going in something like that. When you started adding that county size to that county spec to the road bases. Not that this is a good idea, and I agree that there's some issues with it, but it also limits who's gonna be able to afford to buy land in the county if you require smaller developments to build a road to that size. And I'm speaking as a cop, I'm just starting from my experience, I, what he's saying there on smaller developments, it doesn't even need, doesn't need that big of a...
But let's set a workshop for, to discuss this and try to get some, some of the planning board that will come, also.
And I'd like to grab some stuff from like surrounding counties too, just to see what the specs are for us.
October tenth is everybody, is that a good day for everybody?
I just want to point out that the planning board is currently going by these standards, even though we've not approved them. That is, that's correct.
We still, I would still like to talk to them.
I just wanted to make sure if I knew that they're going by these standards.
We literally just got handed this again, so I would like to...
What'd you say, the tenth?
October tenth, is that good?
What time?
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
October tenth at six thirty.
Let's just workshop it to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution School Fund, Pope County Board of Education.
Yes, sir. So, when it started school, the cafeteria fund was behind the eight ball a little bit, the money hadn't dropped. The first request for money hadn't dropped into cafeteria funds, so we are proposing to borrow sixty thousand dollars from our general fund to go into cafeteria fund to be paid back in two equal payments of thirty thousand dollars.
Just want to transfer the money inside your...
Asking for it.
That is asking for it.
After you made a comment like you did about my cut.
I second it, Jackie.
I mean, we're doing this from time to time, but...
Will you read it to us?
I'm having glasses with me, I can't, I can't...
He borrowed mine the last time and he stretched them, so that's...
Well, I mean, look, I have to carry this thing around all day.
Let somebody read it, tell sure to lean on it.
Oh, I'll read it. Whereas Pope County Food Service operates on a month-to-month claim reimbursement basis, funds are requested from the state of Tennessee. Whereas the cafeteria fund has started the 2024-2025 school year reimbursement. The first reimbursement was requested September fifth, two thousand twenty-four. The reimbursement will not be deposited into the account until after September twenty twenty-four, payroll is due to be paid. Whereas cafeteria fund is requesting a transfer from the general purpose fund until requests for reimbursements begin on a regular basis. Whereas generally-accepted accounting principles consider a cash deficit in any fund to be significant deficiency in internal control. And whereas Pope County School District does not desire to operate any funds with cash deficits. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Pope County School District, a school district in Tennessee, meeting in a regular call session on the ninth day of September twenty twenty-four, and by the County Commission of Pope County, a county in Tennessee, meeting in a regular call session on this twentieth day of September twenty twenty-four. Yeah, we gotta change the date and it's a irregular, irregular call session on the twenty-fourth of September twenty twenty-four. The general purpose shall fund shall transfer sixty thousand to the cafeteria fund on September twenty-first, uh, September twenty-fifth. And then the sixty thousand transfer will be paid back to the general fund in two payments of thirty thousand, first payment November twenty twenty-four and second payment December twenty twenty-four. This resolution will take effect on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. The Secretary of the Board of Education shall include this resolution in the minutes of the Pope County Department of Education. The county clerk shall include this resolution in the minutes of the Pope County.
Make a motion to approve school resolution ninety-one of twenty-four.
Yes, sir. It's good. Roque.
Steve Parker, Shane Bowman, Greg Bruce, Danny Carver, Debbie Dago, Hush Davis, Chrissy Harden, Dawn Morgan.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you sign that? Bring your glasses next to the...
My secretary leaves a note on my back.
You can't read it without your glasses. Did you do that on purpose? He did.
Well, I don't read it well.
Fifteen degrees, but he don't.
So, the operating board has sent the members, is speaking, so does Tom, all that hurt?
There, I have a couple of things up here, I'll pass to you guys. Just a quick update and then you guys want to get out of here. One of them is the calendar of events, the other one is just an overview of our programs for this year. There's a typo on this one, it says forty-four programs. We actually have a hundred and forty-four total programs, seventy-two east, seventy-two west, we run parallel programs there. We had a total of one thousand five hundred fifty-three participants in this program this summer. Over the year, we had a total of twenty-four thousand three hundred sixty-two library visits, computer uses two thousand nine hundred twenty-three, and wifi users seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty. So, we had a really successful year. The one thing that I want to point out to you guys, that was a bit of a change this year that was really successful, and we hope we can count on your support in this next year, is a tween program that we put together. Our daddy was showing that basically after nine years old, kids, you know, they stopped going to Storytime and they're kind of that between age where they're not having summer jobs, they got nothing to do, and anybody who's had kids knows that's a pretty vulnerable age. And our tween program was extremely successful this summer. Some of the things that we did, that the kids participated in, was learning Navajo code. Another one was we had a NASA ambassador come and the kids were able to map out constellations. They were doing really interesting things that were hand-off and educating as well as physical activity. So, it was just really successful, we hope that we can count on your support in this, in the coming year. So, if you have any questions, let me know.
What do you think from long-term?
Long-term, we need a program director. So, with that many programs running on both sides of the mountain, we're gonna need someone. Lori Cox, our library director, is probably one of the hardest working people in the county. And it was pretty overwhelming for her, but she was able to pull it off. I don't think that's a long-term solution, and the staff already is short on the west side. They're just having a hard time with keeping people, staff there right now, we're already one short. I think a long-term solution, because we do have so many participants, and especially in the summer, when we have so many more programs and so much participation from youth in the community, we could really use a program director. And I think maybe Lori can probably tell you more about more granular specific needs for that, but that's kind of our, our big need in the future.
Have you done this over like two or three summers, will you get us up the gate and buy that? And are there open any breaches every summer?
Yeah, we do have that data, I didn't bring it today, but we do have enrollment for all of our summer programs and you can see the break there. We actually have slightly more participation on the east side than we do on the west side, but only by like, you know, like a hundred fifty, two hundred, like overall type stuff here, like for example, the library visits on the west side were eleven thousand nine hundred, east side twelve thousand four hundred forty-seven. So, they're, they're pretty close. But we traditionally, same thing with the total program, we ran the same programs east and west, west had seven hundred seven participants, east had eight hundred forty-six, which equals fifteen hundred and three. So, but it is growing and I can get that data for you. And like I said, we added the tween program and it was really successful this year for those kids that really are in between.
Well, that's really showing, maybe too, on the east side, because we're two-thirds of the population down here and they're one-third, and their numbers are higher than our two-thirds, they're one-third.
Well, I'm guessing it's kind of for lack of anything else. You know what I'm saying, like you, or like isolated, you gotta go drive into Georgia or whatever to, you know, for life and to do something else. We do have really strong participation on the east side.
So, you've got to duplicate programs like everything you do.
We duplicate everything, we have, like you can see here, a little, this is kind of a fun thing that we did, our bookworm. So, we have assie for the east side and lassie for the west side. But, you know, kids find it, a different businesses throughout the county, so they're participating in businesses as well in the community, so...
So, business is actually kind of...
Yeah, we've had a lot of support from businesses and then also, you know, we are able to kind of help promote those businesses, that support the library as well for participants that are in the community. So, and like I said, we have people that are coming in from the community, like we had, some of our special guests were Seamus Conkey from NASA, we had canine rescue dog, Hawasi of Coey State Park, Lynn from the Chamber of Commerce, we had some yoga instructors, and Mark from Wawa Raki, so there's just some, some of the ones that we, um, community participants that we have.
So, it's easily reflected what's going on locally in our community.
They're really strongly tied to commerce in the community. And we're actually hoping that we can get more support from commerce in the community, especially when we do like book sales and things like that, fundraisers, because if we can get fundraisers, then that relieves, you know, the purse strings of the county a little bit more, we can be, the more self-sufficient that we can be, although we know that we're not there, obviously. So, we're hoping that we can count on your support and we score a program director for this next coming year, because we do have so much community participation in these events and we hate to see them go away.
Have you, the other counties, like, we do this, or a lot of areas?
Yeah, this is all based on like a state effort, which is part of a national nationwide effort. So, this is going on in counties all over the state. Of course, we kind of cater them based on, you know, our local participation as well. Like I said, you know, the chamber members or, you know, people up here in our specific county.
We appreciate that, especially since you got to do the catch service. You know, most counties, it's one thing for location, everything else, it's gotta be done twice.
Yeah, exactly.
We have to deal with that too, Jackie's office, health department.
Sure, or you got one chair for...
Basically, everything, yeah.
I mean, we're used to it too, but do the job, keep up. See the catch service.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Fence bids for South Polk, getting work back. This is just like every RFP that I've tried to do, just let everybody know that the bids are out for the South Polk dump site. Danny wasn't able to make it that day, but I have to, you can't, we'll make a little daddy. It's pretty much self-explanatory, so we're gonna try to get that. So, we're gonna try to get that side speed soon.
District six or four was built?
Probably, I didn't hear anything.
I was, I was kinda...
You have to start over when you get ready.
Yeah, it's not wrong, I was kind of letting them...
You're good.
Yeah, so, that's just let everybody know that the RFPs are out for the fence at South Polk. That fence had to be taken down as we've expanded it. And I'd also like to say thank you to the road department, they've done a little more as you pull out, so you can see a little farther around the actual curve than the hundred and fifty feet that we take an exam. Talking with one of the companies that has done work for us in the past, it's not gonna be a big savings, in their opinion, to go from looking at a top rail all the way around as a high-tensile wire. A top rail looks a little better, I mean, we all know that. But there's not gonna be, according to them, they're not seeing thousands and thousands of dollars of savings. So, that bid is out two different ways, top rail, high-tensile wire, and also the gate opener that we had talked about during the meeting, there will be a gate opener put in, and some have asked, so we're gonna look to do the concrete pad for the new box to go on to at South Polk. And whenever we do that, we're gonna go ahead and put the electrical in as well for the existing box and then bringing it down. The gate opener will be on the entrance at the South Polk site. Once that's fore-ized, with as much traffic's on a federal road, it's very hairy trying to get yourself pulled in to open up that gate. So, this is something that that committee looked forward, or that looked into, and the gate opener is included on that RFP that will be out.
Was that...
When's that been?
That bid opening is set for the same time that the, well, pending the RFP approval through the ambulance committee, in a moment when we suspend the rules, but all that will be on the seventh of October, twelve o'clock in the morning.
VEC, you've been moving, it's supposed to be?
Well, I've got to give the VEC as far as getting that service moved, but VEC was very ecstatic that we were gonna move that fence back and actually go back a little farther, because that'll also give them a bigger area in the event of someone were to stage during a power outage, they'll be able to actually stage inside of our...
What would be a problem with VEC?
That's all I have, Mr. Parker.
West Community Center, can I have that?
So, the community center is kind of a hot topic, especially if you're from the east side of the county, if you're from the west side, probably not. This has been going on for a while, we finally got our permit approval for the mitigation process. And if the papers don't care, I'd like for you to kind of help me out on this. I know it's a bad word when you talk about asbestos, but asbestos was found. No harm, but whenever we go to remove it, that's when there's the possibility. So, that building will have to be sealed up while the abatement process is going on. They have said that after ninety days, that we will do a month by month. So, they're saying to plan for a ninety-day... So they're saying to plan for a ninety-day closure. If you're not familiar, the community center in, on the east side houses the health department. I had an office there, Jackie has an office there, trustee's office is there, veteran's affairs office is there, probation is there, senior center. It's also in the basement is headquarters for the fire department. So it is a real catch-all building. And what happened was, was an inch and a quarter line came loose. It was found at two o'clock on a Saturday. That was a heck of a call. As, that actually happened just a few days after we had had our commission meeting there. But we assured the people of District Three that the community center was not closing.
Well, that's what I was going to say, you stress, this is. And that we didn't cause it, we did not cause this, so we don't get.
Oh, yeah, as I sit there that night, waiting on Sir Pro to get there, at about ten, eleven o'clock, there was a thunderstorm that came through. As I looked across the way and said, yep, Lord, I, I said that, yep. But, yes, we are working hard. They had to bring a lot of their air handling equipment in. That was the reason why we had it closed down for that time period. They're currently working on getting everything moved out. There's a temporary building put in place for the health department. And I am working diligently to see about getting another building put into place for the senior centers, as well as the possibility of at least a ten. I know that's not the best option, so please understand, I do know that. But to try to get somewhere for the seniors to be able together to enjoy some of the things that they enjoy is what we're really working hard to try to do.
You got a plan in Jackson for your office?
I don't have an employee after Friday, so. No, so we'll probably be closing until after everything's done.
Just have to come in a minute.
Constantly working on location to meetings.
I'm open for about anything. I, I know I got your message about the library, the only thing I don't know about the library is, is I'll get with them, I will get with them. Yes, and one other thing, Paul brought this up earlier. So the election commission office, or the election commission voted to go to the East Pope Library. So the library has, so the election will be held at the East Pope Library. So all early vote. Also, early voting is going to be extended in their hours. So I can't remember the exact time, I want to think nine to seven, but before you print that, please let me check the date and make sure. But I do know as well as there's going to be longer hours at the bidding office. So there is a little positive that this happened. That's all I have.
If you was to find somebody, I wonder if Doug would let you pop up in the city hall?
Actually, it's not just finding places. I have all the equipment, which is, when I have to move, it costs the county each time. Yeah, they, they call, and then we have to move back. So, but, yeah, I'm up for that, but it will take about a month, two months to train somebody, once I get the minutes.
Maybe not like a full working office, maybe just like a pop-up, so if they just.
And which now they can do anything, you can renew your driver, I mean, renew your renewal online. Call the office, we can mail it, and.
I just worry about our elders, yeah, because, yeah, maybe.
I mean, even if. It's moving the equipment is the thing. Getting the IAS to come out and move the equipment, pay them, make it six hundred dollars to move it. And then if I'm there, and nobody knows, then I'll have to pay six hundred dollars to go back. So, so it's just.
Robbie can buzz through this live. But for the new commissioners, y'all are lucky, it's never been an issue, some of us always know. But by law, we got to do our time, leaving on the meeting, and it's nearly nine o'clock. And we've got something urgent, we need to spend the rule before the RFP, so. Can you hear that?
Yep, I heard this.
Then we got to spend rules for ambulance fees, because nine o'clock gets over.
All this is, is just a letter of commitment that will be read aloud. This deal with the Tourism Enhancement Grant that I've spoken to you all about, just rest of it on file. This letter's to approve the county commission meeting on 9/24/24 at the Benton Courthouse. Stand as the county commission board's approval to match the grant funds for the Tourism Enhancement Grant. Grant has been applied for at the maximum amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Pope County is a tier-three county with a commitment of a ninety-ten match required. This letter stands as the approval from the Pope County Commission to match the funds in the amount of up to ten thousand dollars for the Tourism Enhancement Grant if awarded.
And what does that pay for?
Uh, we're going to use this towards the show barn, like, that's what the show barn was originally built off of, was a Tourism Enhancement Grant. If I could get a motion second, just sweep vote, that way that'll stand true.
Motion to approve second.
Whatever, two twenty-four.
We got side doors now.
This question. RoKaw.
Keith Parker, Shane Bowman, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, mush Davis, Chrissy Harden, yes, Kelly Morgan, Tom Kipinger, Matthew.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
And this is for our ambulance service.
This is what?
The ambulance, RFP, and the.
RoKaw.
Keith Parker, Shane Bowman, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, mush Davis, Chrissy Harden, yes, Kelly Morgan, Tom Kipinger, Matthew.
Chairman, the committee members of the EMS first needs to approve, or disapprove, the RFP as their recommendation.
I make a motion to approve the RFP for our ambulance.
Second.
Take motion.
RoKaw.
Keith Parker, Shane Bowman, Greg Brooks, Dave Carver, Debbie Davis, mush Davis, Chrissy Harden, yes, Kelly Morgan, Tom Kipinger, Matthew.
Secondly, we ask that the commission consider authorizing the use of eminent domain powers for completion of the Chestoee Road over Chestoee Creek new construction bridge project, and that the commission employ the law firm of Logan Thompson to represent Pope County in the conclusion of this matter pursuant to TCA 2917-201. And I have these in writing, will submit them for your approval at the time of the benefit of this last meeting.
I make the motion for imminent domain, twenty-five, on Chestoee Road, the bridge.
Is this going? Say your mind, what do you think about doing this? Or improve safety?
It'll improve safety. It'll improve safety for the citizens, because we're planning on, is from the consultant's design, to improve the travel where it wouldn't flood as often. Every time there's a two-inch rain, and add a wall, it floods in that area where that bridge is, and I should improve. And it's basically use it or lose it grant.
And if we redo it, it costs us over six hundred thousand, we lose that six hundred?
If we start over, yeah. What you would lose is you'd lose all of the planning, it's taken a couple of years of planning. We'd have to start over from scratch. And if we do that, that's going to cost us a lot more money in consulting fees.
And then prolong it even.
You're prolonging even more.
You know, one quick question, Roy, which is, you know, I just, I'm just curious. I know the state is the one that has their engineers, you know, that's not you anyway. But shouldn't they get permission before they start designing, just to know that all of that is going to come through?
I can, I can give them your number.
Yeah, do that, I'd love to have, oh, please do, because I got another question, yes.
Yes, you can call.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm curious to that. You know, it looks like that they would have the land tied up, and then they'd go in and make the plan, instead of making the plan, not knowing if somebody's going to buck on them. You know, I don't know.
Put the cart behind the horse?
Yeah, put the cart behind the horse or sit in front of the horse.
All right, we got a motion. Anybody want my? We need a second, guys.
Second. This question. I'm not a family, and I don't like, period. Well, I mean, I don't think anybody on here is for any kind of government intrusion, because we pretty much know our politics in Pope County, and where they stand. But there's also exceptions, river rules, and this is a little bitty piece of property, and it's all in the name of public safety. It, you know, have no effect on the property owner, you know, I think. That's it. I mean, for it, it, man, we got Pope County, I just know it's Pope County.
Well, and I'll, I'll kind of go in with that too, Greg, on the far. When the railroad built a five million dollar bridge on my road, once again, that's why I said, their steps don't, none of it, well, I said the railroad, it wasn't railroad, it was railroad bridge that the state took over. So before they built that bridge, they come to the landowners. Well, I didn't want, it caused me, I didn't get, they didn't buy that much land from me. But I had to relocate cows, I had to redo a fence, I had, it caused me a lot of misery. But I knew that it needed to be done, so, you know.
Keith Parker, Shane Bowman, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, mush Davis, Chrissy Harden, yes, Kelly Morgan, Tom Kipinger.
Yes.
Chairman Barber, real quick. We're at the cutoff.
You guys just started a meeting for an executive meeting, I'd like sixty seconds to make a request to the commission. Where is? Well, I'd like to get an advisory next meeting for the road adoption of White Water River in Creek side of Fort Towne Country. Please, I've tried to go about several channels to get that done, that was not added to today's agenda. It has to be on the next regular session, for the commission.
Having a request, if possible, I have just for the minutes to be placed into the clerk's office to get set him around where your road list, inventory, and.
We don't have to vote on that, we just put it in the.
You were just requesting it to be spread across the net, Greg?
Yes. I think you wanted us to say that.
Hey, folks, the district city has an orientation today, by Saturday, October.